For the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord, having the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, Kate?
Sure. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowan is absent. Marie McFarland.
Here.
Josh Brainard.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
And Sean Keir.
Here. Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
None tonight.
Okay. And the minutes for the meeting on May 7, 2019, can we get an approval for those?
I motion we approve the minutes of May 7, 2019.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Final orders, resolution, and written communications?
None tonight.
It is now 6:04 PM. Public hearing for file ZOA 2019-02 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning to allow accessory uses to places of worship, including those uses and limitations defined in Oregon Revised Statutes 227.500. In addition, the ordinance will allow as an accessory use emergency sheltering of individuals and families, with limits on the number of people based on zoning and size of the facility. The Planning Commission's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the City Council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation or may take other action. The Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Do any members of the Commission wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? That's a no. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to those criteria, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents its report, I'll summarize the adopted public hearings procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If your testimony includes questions, please direct them to me as the chair. We won't interrupt your testimony to answer questions. We may direct your questions to staff following your testimony. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet in the back. At the entrance, please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit to into the record, please provide a copy to the City Recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Lindsay Zamo, Planning Director. Tonight we have a staff report on the draft ordinance, file number ZOA 2019-02. The action by the Planning Commission is required after 60 days of a complete application is received, the Planning Commission shall make a recommendation to the City Council. The intent of tonight's meeting is to garner a public comment and public testimony on the draft regulations to assist you in your decision on that recommendation. City Council and the administration have requested Planning Commission to consider zoning code amendment to authorize accessory uses of places of worship, as provided under ORS 227.500, and to address temporary sheltering for individuals and families at places of worship. This amendment was initiated by myself pursuant to Lincoln County Municipal Code 1788020. As the Commission, you will review the proposed amendments for compliance with the comprehensive plan, state statutes, statewide planning goals, and make recommendations to the Council. The proposed amendment modifies the R1, R1RE, VR, RR, and RM zones to authorize accessory uses for places of worship, as authorized under state statute, and also adds overnight sheltering of individuals with a limit to a maximum of 15 per evening, with standards requiring a minimum of 50 square feet of area per individual. In addition, the proposed amendment modifies the GC, NP, TVC, and OP zones to authorize accessory uses for places of worship, as authorized under state statute, and also adds overnight sheltering of individuals with limits not to exceed one person per 50 square feet. Under all zones considered for amendment this evening, the overnight emergency sheltering of individuals and families require building and fire code compliant facilities. In addition, compliance with Oregon Fire Code Technical Advisory Number 11-14 is required, and staff had printed some additional copies of that for the public this evening, and those should be, if they're still available, on the back table. Places of worship are a conditional use allowed in all of the above referenced zones, so go through a conditional use process when established for a new place of worship sighting, which would mean that it would come to the Planning Commission for consideration and compliance with the codes and the impacts to the neighborhood. This code amendment would authorize the existing and established places of worship to establish accessory uses through site plan review, whereas citing of the new places of worship will undergo a conditional use process, as I previously just stated. I would like to know, in addition, that this is not a mandate for places of worship to provide these services. State law authorizes that the places of worship have their full right to manage their area and the services they want to provide, under the leadership of that place of worship. I have a very brief PowerPoint presentation this evening. Goes over the background of ORS 227.500, which was updated in 2017 by the Oregon State Legislature, and it requires that cities shall allow the reasonable use of real property for activities customarily associated with the practices of religious activities, including services, religious classes, weddings, funerals, meal programs, childcare, and housing. After G, under the ORS, it goes on for a little bit, hence the dot-dot-dot. I did not continue it on the slide, though. So in the draft ordinance, in addition to the uses identified and codified in Lincoln City Municipal Code, the ORS 227.500, City Administration has requested staff in the Planning Commission include provisions that authorize the use of temporary overnight sheltering in approved and permitted places of worship. The current draft ordinance has a requirement for a minimum of 50 square feet per person. There are distinctions between the residential and commercial zones, as I previously discussed. For churches within residential zones, there will be a maximum limit of 15 persons per night. Both for the residential and commercial zones, it requires compliance with Oregon Fire Code Technical Advisory Number 11-14. Technical Advisory 11-14 requires addressing time limits, which is a maximum under this advisory of 60 maximum nights per 365 days. Also requires addressing life safety requirements, such as fire, smoke, carbon monoxide alarms, or a plan to have a night watch per person, making sure that safety is adhered to when they have visitors. So with that, that concludes the staff report. I am available for any questions from the Commission, if you have any prior to opening the public hearing. Otherwise, I would recommend the Commission open the public hearing and consider testimony.
Lindsay, a question. On page eight of the packet, under the proposed amendments, where you go through R1RE, et cetera, you have a maximum of 15 per night, evening, on the standards, but the next paragraph below, you do not have a limit of people, you only have not to exceed one per 50 square feet.
Correct. And so through the work study that was held with the Planning Commission, it was proposed that there would not be a maximum capacity in the commercial zones, that the area that would be dedicated would be the limiting factor. And so the 50 square feet would be the limiting factor. In the residential zones, if there's an extremely tiny church that doesn't have the 50 square feet times 15, they would be limited to the smaller number.
This is theoretical. If a church purchased a piece of property in another area of town that was not adjacent to the place of worship, could, under this amendment, could they convert that to a shelter for the homeless?
We do have a definition in the municipal code that is specific to emergency shelters, and so if it was not a place of worship that went through a conditional use process to establish their location, it would need to be developed as an emergencies shelter.
So that would not fall under this, really? So under this, it's only the actual place of worship where that can be used as an emergency shelter?
Correct. And if your church, or my church, chose to purchase vacant land and wants to utilize that land for these accessory uses, they would need to come in for a conditional use permit to establish the primary use of a place of worship prior to any of this.
Thank you.
Can you back up a couple slides on there? One more, right there. On G, doesn't that follow that the building is supposed to be a detached building? Is that what I read in there?
I do not, I failed to bring the, oh, wait, maybe I haven't. So G is providing housing, or space for housing, in a building that is detached from the place of worship provided, and then it goes through seven different standards of requirements for that. G is related more to permanent supportive housing. Ultimately, I'll read one of the requirements. Housing and space for housing provided under subsection 1G of this section must be subject to a covenant that restricts the owners and each successive owner of the building from selling the unit as housing that is not affordable with incomes equal to or less than 60% of the median family income.
Yeah, and I wasn't worried about that part of it. What I was worried about is, in the writing here in G, the fact that if a church has a place of worship, has only a individual building.
Correct.
They do everything in, then they wouldn't be allowed to use it to shelter people?
They would not be allowed to use it as permanent housing. They would have to actually establish a permanent housing to do that. Sheltering could occur within their place of worship, whether that be a classroom.
That's what I wanted to clarify, that that was allowable.
The square footage is met. Any other questions from the Commission before?
Yes, I have one for you. So if, just say this passes at the end of summer, and we're coming into winter, and all these wonderful folks who are out there doing things to help people, and they have to come up to code, what is the midterm plan for the people that get displaced then?
Yeah, so that's where the Oregon Fire Code handout is useful. There are life safety requirements. That can either be fire sprinklers, it's not necessary for a building to have fire sprinklers installed to allow it to be used as a temporary shelter. However, buildings with approved fire sprinklers may be granted more flexibility. And then it goes on to speak about smoke alarms, carbon monoxide.
Okay.
Which would not have a large overhead.
Okay.
To install.
Okay.
And then an emergency evacuation plan, and fire watch.
Thank you.
Not night watch, sorry.
Any other questions?
Staff would like to note, I failed to identify this in my staff report, we did receive three written comments that were included in your packet. I want to make sure that you had an opportunity to review those before deliberation.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now is the time for a public comment and testimony. I'll start at the top of the list here, it looks like we've got a few people. Ray Hackey.
Hackey.
Hackey, I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, my name is Ray Hackey. I'm an attorney with the Pacific Justice Institute. We are a nonprofit law firm devoted to defending religious liberty for churches as well as individuals. We've handled a number of cases involving the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, that's a federal law, that I'm here to speak to you guys about tonight. We've handled a number of cases, including Faith International, or, excuse me, International Church of the Four Square Gospel versus City of San Leandro, which was decided by the Ninth Circuit. And they say in that particular, they say in that particular case that, nuts, okay. "For a religious institution, having a place of worship is at the very core of the free exercise of religion, and churches and synagogues cannot function without a physical space adequate to their needs and consistent with their theological requirements. The right to buy, build, or rent such a space is an indispensable adjunct of the core First Amendment right to assemble for religious purposes." Okay? And on top of that, there are two specific provisions within our LUPA, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, that I wish to speak to you about. One of them is the substantial burden provision. So basically, if this law is going to substantially burden the exercise of religion, there needs to, A, be a compelling interest in it, and B, it needs to be narrowly tailored to serve that interest. The other one, which I think is a little bit more applicable here, is the equal terms provision, which states at 42 U.S.C., Section 2000 CC, Subsection B1, "No government shall impose or implement a land use regulation in a manner that treats a religious assembly or institution on less than equal terms with a nonreligious assembly or institution." A government violates the equal terms provision under the case of Centro Familia Cristiano Buenos Neves v. City of Yuma, when a church is treated on less than equal basis with a secular counterpart, similarly situated with respect to an exempted zoning criteria. So if, so basically, if there are certain secular uses that you're not requiring this for, and you're basically singling out churches for distinguished treatment, then you're running afoul of our LUPA. Basically, the First Amendment protects against, it protects against hostility, which is masked as well as overt, that's under City of Hialeah, or Church of Kumivabluai v. City of Hialeah. So I would strongly recommend that before you enact this law or pass this to the City Council for approval, that you look at whether you're substantially burdening religion, and whether you're treating other churches and other houses of worship on equal terms with other facilities. Thank you.
Susan Walkie?
My name's Susan Walkie, and thank you for providing this opportunity to speak tonight. A few years ago, the City Council adopted an ordinance that allowed churches to provide car camping in their parking lots. I'm not sure that any religious organizations in this town have taken advantage of that opportunity, but I think it's unconscionable for us to allow people to sleep in the cars and not be housed inside the church in a warm environment with facilities other than a If the house of worship is willing to do so. So I think that it only makes sense to provide this opportunity for the churches in our area to provide this service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry if I didn't say that correctly?
Magnin?
Okay, I did.
Hi, I'm Phil Magnin. I'm pastor of Calvert Chapel, Lincoln City. I was reading the packet regarding place of worship accessory uses that the city provided, and I had some real concerns about codifying into law the regulation of exercise of religion and its ramifications on those wonderful local charitable organizations, religious or not, that do a work of kindness here in Lincoln City every day. I'm somewhat baffled by the presumption that the city has the authority in the first place to authorize any religious activity that we decided to practice on our own property. Even the state and county assessor recognizes us and other churches as religious entities. I fear the city is forgetting those facts. It also disturbs me that the term places of worship is stated at least 17 times in this proposed ordinance, which can only make us feel rather targeted. To even be required to go through a conditional use process, to be approved to be a new church is on the face of it unconstitutional. I can fully appreciate the desire to make our building safe, but people happily attend our church and other churches every week without incident or imminent danger. Even parking isn't an issue, as churches will only grow as much as we have available parking. We all carry liability insurance, keep our churches safe with maintenance and fire extinguishers, but for the city to decide whether we can engage in certain charitable acts, or ministries, or religious expression through zoning, reveals to me that city laws are inadvertently callous to the needs of those who suffer each day in our community, and callous to people of faith. I know that's not your intention. The packet, though, that we received from the city, it says, "Places of worship are conditional uses allowed in the above referenced zones. This code amendment would authorize existing places of worship to establish accessory uses through site plan review, whereas citing new places of worship will undergo a conditional use process established for the zone being proposed. Analysis of accessory uses for new places of worship will occur at the time of application and consideration." Honestly, I'm blown away by even the term accessory uses. It is not an extra use of the church, it is a ministry of the church. It is not something for the city to regulate, especially when it's an act of kindness. Once again, I'm virtually shocked at the audacity of such a city proposal to regulate churches or new churches that are starting in this community, which potentially prohibits the free exercise of religion in Lincoln City. I don't think I need to remind this Planning Commission that even, the Planning Commission is responsible to uphold the US Constitution, and forbids prohibition of free exercise of religion. I'm sure you still believe that we have inalienable rights to practice our religion, and it's not conferred by government, but by God. May I implore the Planning Commission to reconsider this ordinance so as not to create something that is so burdensome to those charitable organizations and churches, and perhaps at least draft something that will help them rather than hurt the most compassionate work that is going on right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I have a question of you? So your opposition is mainly the fact that we're even proposing to regulate, in our code, places of worship in any way?
Yes.
So your objection at the base level?
It is, it's a two-layered, I saw it in the packet, and I was like, it was like a big red flag to me, because it's...
Now, I want to ask a follow-up question this way. Do we currently regulate places of worship, other than to say that they're allowed in residential areas?
Places of worship are only allowed conditionally in residential areas currently, so there is no change to the conditional use process. They would have to go through a site plan review for any citing, but they are allowed.
But we do, in fact, have that in the code now.
Yeah, citywide, besides open spaces.
It says, so you would probably object also to the fact that we have that in our code, saying that they're regulated at all?
Yeah, I object to the whole concept that we have to get permission to actually have a church. I object to that. To me, it's very un-American and unconstitutional. So, because you guys keep saying allow, and you have to understand, to me, that's an offense. I understand you mean well, but it's not...
I understand, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I understand where you were coming from.
And I really appreciate your question, your line of questioning. Appreciate it, thank you.
My name is Stephen Lindstrom. I am the pastor of the Four Square Church, New Life Four Square, it's over on 22nd. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, I appreciate you hearing all of our voices. Essentially, the amendment that we have before us today is regarding regulation and oversight of places of worship, providing temporary housing, emergency housing for homeless. I appreciate that, because I understand that regulation, to some degree, can be helpful, for example, regarding fire safety. According to the Homeless Education and Literacy Project, the 2017 to '18 school year saw a historic high of homeless youth within Lincoln County, in fact, we're now seventh in the state regarding districts, school districts that have high homeless rates. 1,016 children, including nearly 200 birth-to-pre-K children, are homeless or displaced within our county. These troubling numbers are actually indicative of a growing trend over the last 10 years of increasing amounts of homelessness of youth and children. At the same time, Family Promise is a ministry, a homeless advocacy and relief group within our county, which provides emergency sheltering for families specifically, and they've seen a dramatic increase in the amount of families that they've been assisting over the past that they established in 2013. They basically function by using spaces of worship primarily to house families during the night while they attempt to find them more permanent housing. And can I just brag on Family Promise for a second? Because I've worked with homeless in Seattle and Los Angeles, and nowhere have I ever heard of an organization that has an over 80% success rate in getting homeless people off the street. That is incredible. That is a way to end homelessness in a community, but I want to tell you that the amendment before us today could result in crippling that institution, as well as other relief agencies in our city. And I'm going to explain to you why that is. There's two things about this amendment that trouble you the most. The first is the requirement to have at least 50 square feet of space per person. Now, if you read the Oregon Fire Code, which has also been issued, they only recommend 35 square feet per person. The amendment, for some reason, has increased that to 50 square feet. If we did adopt that amendment in our facility, I just measured it today, we would only be able to house families of four or less people. We have had families of five and six in the past. Those people would either be turned out of our church, or we'd have to split their family up. So it's something to think about. We do have homeless families in our church today, actually, we're hosting them. The other thing which I find troubling is the requirement to adhere to Oregon Fire Code. If you look at number six, it says on Oregon Fire Code, third page, number six, "Regarding the fire watch during sleeping hours, a fire watch shall be maintained continuously." This means at least one responsible person should be awake and assign this responsibility. Look, we run a full volunteer staff, people have day jobs. If I go to my volunteers and say, "You're required to stay up the entire night with us, and then go work your day job..." So I realize that my time is over, and I have only one question for you, and that is at the very beginning of this, there was a question regarding conflict of interest. Now, I'm going to venture to ask, how many of you are homeless? Right. So...
Homeless daughter.
So there you go.
She's been homeless. She's now in something, but she's been homeless for three years.
But she was able to come out of it. Praise God. The reason why I and other pastors are here is because we need people whose voices are not being heard to be heard, and these agencies work to end homelessness. We don't want to see them go away. So thank you.
I have a follow-up question. You mentioned Family Promise. I got to ask one question about that. Does Family Promise get money from the state government?
They are a nonprofit organization. I'm not sure where they receive grants or funding.
Okay. Why I'm asking that is I wanted to further go on with, who defines a family by Family Promise?
That's a good question. So families within Family Promise are defined as at least one parent, at least one child. The child can be unborn, so sometimes we've had pregnant mothers that can... They are considered a part of it. Other times, we'll have a family of five or six people. That's also considered.
I was just questioning that because my church had an issue with one of the agencies in the community because they were defining the family that was contradictory to my faith's belief in what a family is.
Yes, sure.
And we had a kind of oppositional issue there.
Family Promise is not a religious organization. They're considered a secular organization. They use places of worship primarily because places of worship are usually vacant during the night. But they are a secular organization, so I'm assuming that they would take a more secular approach to defining what a family is, is what I'm assuming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or a more Christian approach.
Yeah. However you look at it. Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Harrison?
I'm Pastor Harrison from Agape Fellowship. Agape Fellowship is a church that has worked here in Lincoln City for thirty-plus years, working with homeless. I probably understand homeless better than most people in Lincoln City. What's before you is a hard challenge. When I first came before the city planning thirty years ago, I had started a church without getting a conditional use permit. And got a nice letter from the city saying, "You need to report." So I came up before the city planning. Well, that service or meeting, the whole town turned out, from all different churches. And the planning department changed their whole attitude. Now, our church is one of the fortunate ones. It's in general commercial. So being in general commercial, we have an outright use. But years later, the Four Square Church had another issue with the city planning department, and it was over the sign ordinance. Their sign was not big enough. I mean, it was too big. They wanted it smaller. And so I came before them and I said, "If you need to find a policeman, should there be a limit on the sign of the police department?" And they said, "No." I said, "If you need to find a fire department, should there be a limit on the size of the fire department's sign?" "No." I said, "If your wife was going to commit suicide, would you like her to find clergy?" And they all just stopped. And so then they let the Four Square have their sign. So what I'm saying is, regulations are good. They're needed. And within balance and used right, they're okay. But there has to be common sense. These organizations that you are addressing tonight are meeting a need in Lincoln City that the city should be meeting, but the city's not meeting it, and so faith-based organizations rise up, and they met the needs. Well, I did that thirty years ago. And we were feeding people before anyone even thought about feeding people, taking care of people before anybody thought about taking care of people, dealing with alcoholics before anybody started talking about alcoholics and drug addicts. This is in our town. Lincoln City needs faith-based organizations, and they need to do whatever they can to be a blessing, not a hindrance. And so keep that in mind as you make regulations.
Thank you. Irene Williams?
I'm a member of this community, and I've been here since 1980. Long before much was being done for the homeless, for anyone else in town, really. People came to this town for a lot of reasons, and they came in the times of the year when the weather was really bad, and there was no place for them to go. Now there is. I was taught in this school district for many years, and there were many families who needed help desperately, and there was no place to send them. And now there's Family Promise. I read your regulations, your proposed regulations, and I was, too, was shocked to see that the planning commission was considering actually regulating what churches could and could not do in their own facilities. I still believe in the separation of church and state, and I hope the commission still does. Thank you for considering all of our concerns. We came in large numbers tonight, and I hope you realize that we are here because we love our town, and we love our churches, and we want to see them be able to function to their fullest ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Kelly Westmark?
Thank you for having us. I'm Kelly Westmark. I'm the pastor at the Lincoln City Church of the Nazarene on Northwest 19th Street. The church has been there for sixty-five years, and I have a great relationship with all of our neighbors. We started a preschool five years ago and have a nice, big playground in the backyard, and all of our neighbors said, "Oh, we love the sound of children in the neighborhood." So it's been a wonderful relationship with that. Also, for many, many years, we've had a contract with the American Red Cross as an emergency shelter in case of, you know, someone's house was on fire or that we had a huge emergency here. They came in and measured everything in the church, and they have their own standards for how many people that they would have in our church during an emergency. So it's just another thing to take into consideration, like there's so many uses that a church building has. And what I love about, you know, when people move next door to a church is they kind of tend to know. They may not know exactly what's going inside. Of course, we always welcome them to come and find out, you know, all the different things that we do, but they kind of have an idea that the church building will be used and in use regularly. So it's always good to have a great relationship with the neighbors, and I just encourage anybody who maybe doesn't know what a church does, we would welcome anyone to come in and find out all that we do because it's a lot, and we appreciate all the volunteers in our community. So thanks so much for all you do.
Thank you. Harriet Gibson?
I came tonight expecting to discuss the space required for students to play indoors or outdoors, and that's why I'm here. I don't see that topic coming up. Maybe you're going to address it more specifically later on in the meeting or at a different meeting.
That provision was actually removed from the proposed ordinance, although the original notice that went out had a section that would have authorized outdoor player is... or indoor player is as opposed to outdoor player is, but apparently there's a state regulation which prohibits us from doing that, so it was removed.
So indoor play areas are allowed to suffice for the children?
No, there's a specific provision in the state law that you have to have outdoor play areas. And that's... We were trying to make it less burdensome and allow indoor player is, but apparently we can't do that, so we removed that proposed amendment from the... It unfortunately still ended up partly advertised.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Alexander?
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Mr. Chair. My name is Patrick Alexander. I'm the president of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. We are currently operating down in Taft Hall. We are open when temperatures drop below forty degrees, and we provide overnight accommodation for homeless individuals anywhere between five to forty-five people per night, depending on the weather. We don't currently operate as an accessory use, although we have in the past when we were at the Congregational Church, but we did have some thoughts on this ordinance. We also don't have any current plans to operate as an accessory use in future. We're planning to pursue the conditional use path. But as we read through this ordinance, two things really popped into mind. The first one, which has been touched on previously, was how this... the impact that this would have on Family Promise, and I think that the intent of the ordinance is to codify an interpretation that would allow Family Promise to continue operating. They serve fourteen people at a time. The fifteen-person limit seems to accommodate them, as long as that can be made to work as far as the space requirements go. But our concern was that this really only goes part of the way to allowing Family Promise to continue operating because in addition to making use of places of worship for overnight shelter, Family Promise has in the past made use of Taft High School at times when churches have not been available. And there's no provision in this draft that would allow the high school to serve as a shelter, as an accessory use. And that, I think, feeds into this larger question about why does this solely focus on places of worship? As you've heard tonight, many people feel a spiritual calling to do a social good, but there are others who are called to the same action for secular reasons. So begs the question, why does this ordinance not extend the same accessory use provision to schools or community halls or the Eagles Lodge, the Lions Club, for example, any kind of community building? I would say that if you widened the scope of this ordinance to incorporate, to include those other kinds of community buildings, then you would maximize the potential benefit. The second issue that popped out with us is the cap of fifteen people in residential... in churches in residential areas. That covers most of the churches in town, and while there might be reasons for capping it, I haven't heard any reasons expressed, but I'd be willing to entertain them, but there's a real downside that should be considered as well to limiting that. As I said, we used to operate at the Congregational Church. That's in a residential area. We would often have more than thirty people with very few issues. This ordinance, if it had been in place, would have prohibited that operation. It's not uncommon for us to shelter more than thirty people a night. If this ordinance was in place and a group tried to do that using accessory use provisions, they would need three churches. That means three times the volunteers. I can tell you, it's hard to get two people to stay up all night to look after the people in our care. Getting six people is really beyond the realm of possibility. As I say, there might be rationale for limiting the number of people. Maybe more people are perceived to cause more problems. I would say maybe, maybe not. From our experience, I can tell you, one person can cause plenty of problems, and forty people can come in and sleep like babies and leave the next morning feeling a bit more human. So food for thought. I would just hope that as you continue your deliberations, you make sure to try and get that balance right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, guys. Elizabeth Reyes?
Thank you. My name's Elizabeth Reyes. I'm the executive director of Family Promise, but I also grew up here in Lincoln City, and I've seen a lot of changes over the years, the good, the bad, and we have some... Homelessness is not going away. The fact that our numbers are so horrific, whether you're talking about individuals or you're talking about families, is indicative of what's in our future. The issues are not going away. If anything, they're only going to get worse. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes people of differing ideas or concepts to come together and come up with solutions. And I've heard a lot of different things of people sitting up here, and I absolutely agree with all of them personally, but also, as Family Promise, I would like to point out two things. One of them being is that when you come up with a limit on up to fourteen, fifteen people, that's how many we have currently allowed in our program. We have found it's very manageable. It's great. It's not too much for volunteers. It fits in our van. However, we do require volunteers staying at the church. And so this... If you put a fifteen-person cap on it, and we have fifteen people in our program, and we usually generally require two volunteers, preferably a man and a woman, and sometimes people like myself, I'll bring my children with me, right there we'd be taken out. We would be in violation. So I kind of feel like I'm not sure why there's that cap on there, and as long as the churches are meeting their code standards as for what the fire department would require, I don't really feel that... That's just one more intrusion on saying what somebody can and cannot do in their place of worship, and that kind of... I'm uncomfortable with that. And the other thing I'm uncomfortable is the limiting the amount of nights that people could do a sleepover, and a really good example would be the Four Square. Four Square Church has been more than generous with us in housing our families. They have a great facility, perfect location, quite a few volunteers, and they actually partner with First Presbyterian... I'm sorry, First Baptist, and then also with the Korean Presbyterian Church, because their congregations and buildings are too small to host our families. That one week, Four Square will take it, and the next week, those two churches collaborate, and while it's still in the same facility, they... It's different volunteers running it and responsible for it. And we generally ask our churches to agree to three to four weeks out of a year, and if we could get everybody to do that, we are covered, and we don't have to use the high school as a backup plan. Some churches are able to step up even more, but based on how things are worded right now, Four Square would no longer be able to meet the needs that they currently are, and that's pretty vital. Other than just the sleeping, it's everything else, so I guess that's it. All right.
What are the limits on the amount of weeks or days that a church could house homeless?
Whatever they feel like committing to. We have...
But I mean in the current... The proposed ordinance?
Up to sixty days per year.
The technical advisory memo from the fire department recommended a sixty-day maximum.
Sixty days a year? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
If there is any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak, please raise your hand.
Chair, I just made an inaccurate statement. The advisory committee... The technical advisory memo states for a maximum of ninety days within any twelve months. I'd like to apologize to you and the public for that.
Come on down. Come on down. Please state your name and the microphone.
My name is Mark Olson, and I am a pastor at the Chapel by the Sea Presbyterian Church here in Lincoln City on southeast Lee Street. I'm not sure right now what the zoning is for our congregation, but again, I'm sure it might be, I'm not sure which, what it is, if it's residential or not. But we have, in two weeks, about twenty-six bicyclists coming in, and they'll be spending the night. And they work, they're doing a bicycle trip to raise funds for the Millard Philgrim, which used to be the head of Habitat for Humanity. Our church has a long history having been in the city of Lincoln City, I'm not sure if it is eighty years ago or what, but it has throughout its history been a site for people to come from Portland, Salem, and other places for retreats. Limiting what a church can do, it's not just for the homeless, but we happen to live in a place that offers opportunities for people to come away from the cities into a place for beach, and this is something that churches do, whether they're hosting youth groups or they're hosting other things. But again, the idea of what, and perhaps maybe you need to gather as many of the religious organizations in town and try to find out what their uses are and how you can best scope this thing to work out to as most needs as possible. I appreciate looking after the safety and the welfare of all of us in Lincoln City, but I think that the church has so much to offer, they just really build a great community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. No questions? Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? If there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I move we close the record and the hearing on ZOA 2019-02.
A second.
All in favor? What is the pleasure of the commission? Do you discuss?
I've got a couple things. I listened to what the pastors have said there, and they make a very good point about why are we regulating churches? What business is it for us regulating religion? Because that's pretty much clear, the practice, the free practice thereof is constitutional, and I would suggest that maybe we take this amendment as we're doing it and separate it out and maybe make the regulations that we want with some limitations for all other places. But I don't think we want to walk on churches' properties and tell them. I think, I'm at this point where I'm not sure that what we've got in code already isn't way more than we should have in code already. I don't think we have the right to regulate churches. I mean, maybe I'm all wet, maybe the Supreme Court sees it different. I don't know, but they brought up an awfully good point. I'm prejudiced, okay? I want you to know, I'm prejudiced. I wore this shirt, or this hat in here today, and I didn't even think about what they were going to tell me. I don't want to regulate churches at all. I'd like to cede some ground to the attorney, our city attorney, because I don't want to step on everybody else's neck, but I'm prejudiced. Am I wrong?
No.
I agree very much with what Gary was saying, because I have a concern. What happens if we don't do this? Is there something that is facing these people if we don't take action on this?
That's my understanding, is why this ordinance was developed, because it was not covered and it allows Family Promise to use-
Yeah, I'm extremely disappointed in the planning commission that perhaps you haven't read your packet. This, this material was to solve a problem, right? This was brought forward to authorize and legalize what has been going on. And, and that's the whole purpose of this. There was no intent to crush religion or do anything. We were trying to fix something because no one in the private sector had come forth and paid two thousand dollars to amend the code to correct this problem. Staff did.
Okay.
And we're, so this is one of those, you know, get beat up for trying to fix a problem.
I didn't mean to beat us up, okay? I'm part of the city and I'm part of the problem, okay? But I'm also part of our country, and, and, and yes, I see the intent was, in fact, to fix a problem that we could see on the horizon, but the problem was created when we started zoning churches and regulating churches in the first place, because maybe we should just have a zoning statement that says, "We don't regulate the use of a church." And, and it's outside of our hands and our jurisdiction to do such.
So should we not regulate their building code as well, and they can just put sticks together and make it happen? I, I mean, at what point do we not, I can see the fire codes. I'm, I think everybody sees the fire code safety behind this. I think limiting the max number of people arbitrarily is ridiculous. I think if you guys can fit however many people you can into your spaces within the safety guidelines of the fire department, have at it. Please do it. Build another building, do more. And the ninety nights per year, if you guys don't take a penny to do this, do it one hundred percent of the year. The moment you guys take payment for anything, declare yourself a business and pay the taxes on it. That's where I'm at.
Any water?
I guess what I'm concerned about is regulating churches. I just, I understand fire code, and I understand property rights, and I understand the possibility that residents in a certain area might be concerned about what goes on in the church. And I understand too that what we call a place of worship, some of us call a place of worship, can be compromised by somebody else who calls their place a place of worship that would not, in fact, treat their neighbors the way we would treat our neighbors, and would not, in fact, give a decent break to those people around. So now I'm swinging back towards over here that where reasonable regulation may have some reasonable reason, just because other people may not be reasonable, and, and-
So according to code now, there's nothing restricting the number of nights for folks to stay at a church in need. Is that correct?
There's no-
No authorization to stay at a church.
Okay. But there's also nothing stating, so there was nothing at all? Okay.
We're, we're-
We're trying to get that-
There's two things we're trying to do here. Number one, let's go back. Couple years ago, Susan Walke testified that we added a provision to the code that said you can allow people to camp in their vehicles in a place of worship parking lot. And we did that because the state law in Oregon had an exception to this whole land use planning scheme that we have, where they treated churches more favorably and they allowed them to do this use, car camping in a parking lot, provided they had bathroom and garbage collection. And so we did that. Some people argue we treated churches more favorably, but we followed the state law. Here again, we have a statute which says, "We can authorize all these uses, subject to reasonable regulations, design review, site review approval, and, and if we don't, we could even prohibit some of these uses if we don't have adequate public facilities. There's not sufficient, you know, streets or water and sewer." So again, we had all these uses that we've given to places of worship because the, the state statute says we can do it, just like the state statute said we could do it for the car camping. So we've drafted that and we've put it forward, and the only regulations that we're imposing are the ones that are specifically referenced here, the site plan review, and the adequacy of the facility. Now, yeah, there's a fire marshal cap on, I don't know if it's thirty-five or fifty, we have fifty in here. We should look at that and make sure that we're consistent with the fire cap. And I'm not sure where the fire marshal got the ninety-day limit, but all we're doing is what we're authorized to do, to try to not take away uses, but to avoid the argument that churches are violating the code by giving them more uses that we're allowed to do. And, and it's not a violation of church and state. We're not unreasonably regulating churches. We're not violating re lupa. We're, we're simply giving what the statutes authorize, because we're allowed to do that, and because there's a need for it. And no one in the private community had come forward and submitted an amendment to the code to do it, so we're doing it.
I am in support of the ordinance for that need, because it meets a need that wasn't covered before. I, my one question is, I have a couple of things. What was the rationale for the fifteen number of limit? And also, I was just thinking, because of what some of the people who testified mentioned, that I know my church from time to time will allow a traveling group that's on bicycles to spend the night there as they're going down the coast or whatever. Would this regulate that kind of activity too? Because often that is way more than fifteen people. And I, so, number one, what was the rationale for the fifteen limit?
I, I know that we had a limit in residential zones and a square footage in commercial zones. I'm, I'm not sure that the residential zone was, it was anything more of a recognition that, for the most part, we have existing operation that has about fifteen, fourteen people, and we needed to make sure that we had a number that was high enough for that existing operation.
And then the other question that came up, if the clients are limited to fifteen, does that fifteen number, actually, let me phrase it wrong, the fifteen, does that include the clients and the volunteers who are serving them, or does it just include the clients?
It would, that would be a conflict of the ordinance that the commission should consider addressing.
Well, I think we need to correct that, if you want to move this forward and-
You should make a recommendation of, if you want fifteen, fifteen would either include or exclude staff or volunteers, or if you don't want the fifteen, what would you use? Would you use a square footage basis like you use for commercial? And that's what I heard you say.
Yes.
And another idea I was thinking is, some churches probably cannot use their facilities to house the homeless, so they're letting their ninety days a year go by, because they just cannot provide that service. Is there any way they could grant their right to do that to another church who would be willing to do that? So, say a church could have, you know, ninety days plus ninety days.
That's an interesting question. I, I think if you're interested in, in trading that allowance, I guess, I don't know where the fire marshal's number came from, so I can't speak to the rationale, but-
We need to find out if that's an arbitrary, because he feels like that's a number that makes him cozy, or is there a state regulation that he's following, something like that? But I, I don't see why, again, if this is not a for-rent service, why are we limiting the number?
Well, I would like to point out, this is a technical advisory memo. They have not codified it into Oregon State Building Code.
Okay. So they're, that's arbitrary.
Well, I imagine there's a process for drafting technical advisory memos and getting them approved up the chain of command, so I wouldn't say it's arbitrary.
Well, okay, fair enough.
I've got another comment. I feel like, again, to go back to their feelings about this, if we build a regulation, then all we're doing is building an opportunity to call, say somebody's in violation of it. When we build this regulation, we're putting a wall up and saying, "And now we can call you a violator. Now we can say that you're doing something wrong." And, and I just, I find it hard to, to go against the freedom of religion. I really do. And, and a ministry, homelessness is, is a ministry of Jesus Christ. I, I don't know about other people's religion, but that's one of those things that you feed the homeless, you shelter the homeless, you don't turn your back on them, and you don't turn your back on them because it's sixteen instead of fifteen. And you don't say you're in violation because it's sixteen instead of fifteen. And so if you don't have a number, it's sort of that, that oddball game that we play, well, if we make the regulation and we put a limit on it, we have already said, "And if you cross it, you violated it."
But Gary, I think this ordinance-
Whether it's days or people.
If, if it's adopted, it protects those who are providing the service already. So for example, now, that's not an accessory use. And if there's a neighbor who's next to a church that is providing shelter for families from, what's the group?
Family Promise.
Family Promise. They could complain and say, "I don't want them here," and you've got to get them out, because there's no accessory use that allows that.
But we make an accessory use-
We're protecting them.
We make an accessory use without a limitation, because if we put a limitation, we're making a violation.
I think we need an accessory use, and I think we need to tweak this a bit so it's more encompassing, you know? Allows more people and allows more nights.
We just say it's an accessory use, and we don't go any further than that.
No restriction.
It is an accessory use. I shouldn't be, that we're regulating them anyways, but if we're going to regulate them, let us at least leave the barn door open. Let's not shelter it and, you know, and follow these rules. And if you don't, you're violating, you know? I'd rather we didn't, but I, if we-
Are any of these churches on a raised foundation? Does anybody know what the maximum load limit is of your building?
I believe the, the record's closed.
I'm just throwing out a devil's advocate argument, you know?
As the chair, we can do-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Never mind.
Staff can look into that though, with building plans, if you'd like. What I hear from the commission is that should, should the commission want to make a recommendation to move this forward, it would need to include removing the cap for the residential zones and keep it with a square footage, potentially even reducing the square footage from fifty to thirty-five. And then I hear from Steve that he would like to establish that just, it's an accessory use for the primary use, and, and whatever a place of worship would determine as their accessory use, that that should be allowed. Now, how-
It's right now, it's not allowed.
Correct? Right now, it's not allowed, and one mic-
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed in the current regulations, and as Steve pointed out, if we, in code enforcement, got a complaint, because we are complaint-based, we would have to go and, and shut one of these down. And that's not something that my department wants to do. So what I, what we're proposing is to try to find a balanced solution. One option of the commission is to continue discussion on this, or we can come back and continue the deliberation for our next meeting and have some more time to go out to the public and speak about the operations and see if we can find a balanced solution.
I'm not sure that extra time, due to the fact that we probably are somewhat constrained with what we can go forward with, would change, would change the conditions of, I would either say that we could go forward with an ordinance that doesn't restrict them, just says it's, it's an accessory use, it's allowable, with no confinement, no other stuff, no larger statement, it's an accessory use. Fine. Or, I, I look against it, no matter how we regulate it, because now we're building a wall that says, "And you will cross the barrier and we will cause you in violation." I don't like the idea of regulating a place of worship.
And I understand that.
So I, I'm, you know, you guys can go the direction you want to go. I just say, either we do not have a, we have a regulation allowing it, but without condition, or if we're going to put a condition in it, then, then I'm going to be against it.
Your chair.
I'm sorry? Go ahead.
I would think when a church is built, that they go through building inspection, and that, that should be the- and that should be the essence of what they have, that they open the doors then for the congregants. And I don't see any reason to go beyond the fire marshal's approval of the building. And there are certain things that he says when he approves the final building, I would think.
That's a really good point, Miles. Occupancy permits are issued, occupancy permits are issued based upon the type of use. Typically, places of worship do not apply for a overnight use of a residential nature, which is why these commercial buildings, I think there was discussion of, you know, maybe converting, I think council had discussion earlier this month about converting some portions of this building into some kind of service for emergency overnight needs. The cost of changing a commercial structure for daytime use to authorize it for nighttime use can be expensive due to the requirements under the building code. So this is a relief valve that the fire code, building code officials have provided because of the religious nature and desire and intent to provide services for those experiencing homelessness.
But I would think that when the building is approved for occupancy...
If that occupancy included overnight sleeping, then we would not need to regulate that at all. We could have it 365 as an accessory to the place of worship. But buildings are typically, it depends on the class of building and the permit that comes in.
You know, if the night was to fall to zero or 10 below, and you had 50 people outside of your church, you'd let them all in, and you'd open the doors, and you'd say, lay next to each other for warmth. And I don't care what the number is. I just don't like where we're going.
Can I ask you...
I'd have to agree with Gary on that church, even if they're sitting in a pew, can keep warm and better than sitting out on the street.
I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm telling you is that our codes aren't currently allowing it, and we're trying to, we're presenting this ordinance to allow it.
I understand what you're doing. I'm just, I want you to know, I have a problem with what we're doing.
Anybody else? Do we have a recommendation?
Could you repeat the two?
The two items I brought up earlier? Well, I think that what we could do is, based upon, let me just look over the public comment really fast. I think if the planning commission wanted to consider removing the max cap in residential zones and limit it to square footage available, that could be sufficient, and that you could recommend that. I need to ask council, would we need to go out for another public notice because that would be exceeding beyond what was publicly noticed?
Yeah, but it's not, we have some leeway. And we did say a square footage, a number, but it may not be the number that gets ultimately adopted. There are several cases on this. As long as we're not varying too much, we're okay.
Okay. So I heard concerns with the 50 square footage when the fire code technical advisory recommends or requires a minimum of 35. I heard concerns about the 90-day maximum for these places of worship. And I also heard, so the max, the 50 versus 35 and the 90 days. Those were the biggest issues that I heard in regards to this. And then I think that Mr. Alexander had some really good comments in regards to, what about the other community halls and service areas within the town that do have the ability and, from the sounds of it, have provided these services as needed before.
And in that respect, we probably, since we haven't noticed that we would allow it in other zones, this is specific to the conditional use for place of worship in terms of the notices. But if we wanted to get to other community halls and things like that that are specifically listed in the zone, we'd need to notice that.
And I think I've kind of answered a question I brought up myself about the relationship of this ordinance to a church using its facility to house a bicycle group that's coming through town. And that's a temporary thing. That happens maybe once or twice a year for one night. But this emergency shelter, depending on how the weather is like, can be repetitive and can take place night after night, week after week, for a period of time. So I don't see those two things as being the same thing. And I just, but I think we need to add emergency shelters and accessory use. I'd like to see it added to other institutions that provide the service in town, and that we be more liberal on the number of people that could be housed per night and for the number of days they could be housed per night. But I do think we need to add this as an accessory use, so churches are permitted to engage in this activity.
So if, by that rationale, if we were to go to the conditional use approval, most schools are conditional uses in the zone. So they don't really have accessory uses because they went through a conditional use approval, and accessory uses are usually accessory uses to a permitted use, not a conditional use. So like this, we would go to the line that says conditional use, and then go down into school, we would add an accessory use of, and you would say, emergency sheltering. Yeah, okay. Thank you, that's clear.
Is there a possibility that we could kind of change the dialogue to where we actually had something where the churches were treated somewhere and all other types of facilities are treated somewhere, and these conditions that we're putting on would be put on those kind of facilities? But yet we could make an opening for a church that doesn't require a set of conditions against it to start with, to put them in violation, and thereby we move the dialogue out of this, everybody's the same pot, and we're going to try to make this work for everybody, and make two sets of conditions, one for everybody else, and then another one for places of worship, that we could then say, yes, they can. Not more than that.
That would be beyond the next couple of weeks' opportunity. I think that it would need to meet the strict scrutiny law of not being arbitrary and capricious in regulating your land use.
Yeah, in this case...
Sorry, I talk like an attorney sometimes, too.
I need to know what I'm doing stepping across the line, but...
You know, we have a nice Oregon statute here telling us that we need to allow all these uses. And we added emergency sheltering to that because of the need. We did the same thing with the car camping statute. I think that gives us a little bit, I don't really particularly like treating a church more favorably than, you know, another institution that has no religious relationship. But that's the way the statute is commanding, it's saying, you're going to allow these things. I think it's worthwhile to go back and advertise maybe for schools and other, you know, all those kind of organizations, community groups, and look at accessories. But I don't really want to just go ahead and completely separate churches. I think they operate within the same parameters, land use regulation as everybody else. There are some special things in the statute, and we've taken advantage of those. But I think we're all under the Oregon land use system, and to the extent we can vary, we have, trying to take advantage of it.
So it would be the commission's decision on whether you want to make a recommendation this evening to move forward to city council. We do have, because of the timing of the month, we have the opportunity to wait until our June 4 meeting to formalize a recommendation and still be able to have city council's public hearing on June 10.
You have 60 days to make a recommendation. If you're ready tonight, you may just want to make the motion to recommend approval with the change that you go to 35 square foot instead of 50, remove the numeric cap of 15, and you get rid of the 90-day limitation. If I was to summarize.
Second that.
So moved and...
I moved it.
Right, say it again.
That we go forward, you know, recommend, I'm sorry, I have a long day in a jury all day, so...
Let me summarize. The recommendation of the planning commission in this motion would be to recommend approval of the ordinance with the following changes: remove the 15-person cap in residential, change the 50-square foot to 35, consistent with the fire marshal's, what was stated as the fire marshal's memo, and remove the 90-day limitation per place of worship.
Got it, I got it.
Yes.
Mr. Appicello, in removing the 90-day, because of the definition of accessory within our municipal code, would we want to limit something like five months and 31 days? Or are we okay with 365?
You know, don't make me talk about vacation rentals. But numeric limitations are great, and they're very objective, but accessory use, as incidental and subordinate to the main use, has been around for decades, and it's not confusing except to VRD owners in this town. So I think we're okay with accessory use.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Got an a.
Aye.
So staff will prepare the recommendation for sitting chairs, signature, and we'll be in contact with you. The next public hearing on this issue will be on June 10 in front of the city council. We welcome your comments, please come.
Thank you, guys.
I did provide some business cards on the back as well, if you want to make any phone calls.
Let's see, is there any new business?
There, let me pull up the agenda, I lost it already. New biz, no, yes, we do. We have a work study on the comprehensive land and zoning amendment for development agreements. That is packet, starting on packet page number 23. But may I propose we take a five-minute recess so I can close up the PowerPoint?
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, the sentence, we, it's all...
Much state law supersedes our...
If you give me your email, I'll find it. I think Kate may have, Kate may be looking it up.
So I'm trying to mute the microphone. I have never done it, so...
Everybody needs to respect the laws.
That's what I know, I know. So I understand theirs, too, I mean, because they're trying to make it so that the guy that whines has no ground to whine. But the fact is, is now we're in a place where we don't want to be.
I don't think we're really limiting the way it is now, we're changing restrictions. Are they on fire?
I heard a lot of hard-earned good job here.
Sure.
My only objection is that we're doing, appreciate the hard work you guys do.
Yeah, thank you for coming in and speaking with us.
Of course.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys do a great job.
Trying. It is not easy.
This is confusing, though, because...
We hear about certain...
Let me close the record.
That's a hard part.
We get beat up at our cars, we made them mad. I said, if we get beat up at our cars tonight, we made them mad.
I advise them, members of the public, so...
I said the case.
I feel like that at home with my wife sometimes.
Why aren't you changing the light bulb?
Sure, let's bring up the VRDs again while you're at it.
I brought up my point, because I think St. James Episcopal Church could sell a 90-day zone.
Well, honestly, I don't know where our, I don't know where that 90-day is coming from.
Well, it's seasonal. This emergency is supposed to be seasonal.
And this is also, this is supposed to be accessory.
Yeah, we can sit down, I could like this.
90 days.
We had some people come in and say, no, no, 70 days.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's how they define it.
It's less than half, for sure. And we would have just gone ahead and enforced, just, I said those houses aren't the right size and versatile in our territory.
It was just not very much, but it didn't end up going that way, we ended up...
And Richard?
Staff said...
The more urbanists that were coming forward, I put my other hat on, and I understand where they're coming from.
That's why we claim that, right.
Public safety, public truth.
It has to do with zoning, and every time if someone proposes a use and it's in a residential zone, VRD, that's going to impact people, what also may impact people. If I'm not a religious person and there's a church and there's all these cars and all this noise and all this, that's me, it's just, you know, it's a VRD, it's a...
That's, I mean, that's the issue. That's the issue. If we don't have an ordinance, then the neighbors are going to complain like hell about it.
I'm sorry, you're going to complain.
What people, this group believes to be a...
Someone else can be a worship, but they're totally opposed to it.
I'm not going to want to see that same kind of allowance.
Okay, Chair, sorry about that.
Yeah, let's, break's over, everybody.
Get back to work.
Richard, will you pull the screen up, please?
Hit the button.
So are we reconvened, Chair? We have a quorum at the dais. I think Miles used the restroom.
We got chairs.
No. They got to go through an application process.
We have a quorum, so we can continue.
We can begin, okay. So this work study...
Are we back on?
We've been on the whole time.
We never left.
This work study, this work study topic is on comprehen, discussing a future comprehensive plan and zoning amendment for development agreements. In your packet tonight, you received a development agreement that was established for the city of Ashland. I have, in my past life or past employment, drafted and worked with a property and development team to establish development agreements for the use and allowing some flexibility and changes to the process of application through... changes to the process of application through to development. And that is a very useful tool for municipal, municipalities as well as planning and community development department directors to have, to be able to implement the intent and the desire of the comprehensive plan through a development agreement should specific code requirements not be intended for a whole brush area, but there's one specific site that does allow a little bit of change or flexibility in things. Now, what we're talking about tonight is that Oregon state law authorizes jurisdictions to adopt development agreement standards and regulations. And local ordinance is not required to approve a statutory development agreement. However, the city in past has considered such agreements with the Logan Park annexation. Tonight's meeting is pretty much just focusing on the purpose of development agreements. And what staff will do after our discussion and work study this evening is go and draft a section in Title Seventeen that would authorize the use of development agreements for areas based upon the conversation. And then we can continue to work study that draft before we go out for public consideration.
So you said that Lincoln City has not used them with one exception, is that right?
We have never gone into an, we, we have never successfully executed a development agreement. However, we went through the planning process for one and established a draft one. So, um, let's see here, the, let's see here, Richard, do you want to jump in on anything here?
Sure. So I, I did, I think I emailed you guys and let you know that I in fact did write the development agreement in Ashland. That explains why it's so long.
I wondered.
But in truth, the reason why it's so long is because what it did was bundle a bunch of complicated things. And that's one of the, okay, so when you guys sit here, you may have an application come before you that's quasi judicial. And when you, when you're dealing with a quasi judicial application, you, and I think you all have training materials, maybe you don't, where you have a quasi judicial memo that explains the quasi judicial process. Someone comes in, they want to build something on their property, let's say it's just a, you know, daycare or something like that. And staff in what's almost a kind of rote procedure has to take the standards in our code and apply them to the facts in the application, look at what facts are relevant, and then say, okay, applying the facts to the law, your site plan, let's say the law says you have to be ten feet away, your setback in the side yard is ten feet and you were five feet away. So applying the facts to the law, you're non-compliance. We can't approve this. So you, you know, we go through all those regulations and we review it and we give, it's kind of boring. And there's not a lot of creativity there. And so sometimes quasi judicial stuff just, you know, it's rote, it's routine, it's not exciting, it's not the kind of thing that you guys even need to look at. Sometimes we have procedures or we have criteria that are a little different, though. They might say things like cannot adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. And then we have to be interpreting that code and you guys have to adopt that interpretation and say, okay, well, the surrounding area means the area within six miles. Yeah, that's it, yeah, no, no. It means the area, you know, within a block or whatever. And we, we come up with an interpretation of what might be otherwise kind of vague regulation and we apply it here. And we do that through findings and we explain. And so that's a little bit more, it involves you. It's not as boring as, as the, you know, five feet or ten feet kind of thing. But when you get into litigation with people and they say, you exceeded what you were allowed to ask me for. Your code says I have, I can only provide, your code says I have to provide improvements that address the impacts of my development. And that means the road here, I, all I have to do is put, pave half of it. And you say I have to pave all of it and that's too much. And so we get into these arguments about what the interpretation is or what the code says. And, and there are constraints, like in Dolan and Nolan line of cases going back years, that, you know, what we asked for has to be roughly proportional to the impacts of development and, you know, and lawyers make lots of money over arguing those kind of things. But that's when we're in that quasi judicial kind of role, when we come to you and we have an application and there's disagreement and we argue about the findings. When we are negotiating in a development agreement, it's, it's still got a quasi judicial character because there are some things we're still looking at to say five feet or ten feet, impacts on the neighborhood, we're looking at those things. But when we're negotiating a development agreement, it's a legislative act and it's not subject to things like Dolan and Nolan. That is, when you're settling a case and I, Leroy Land Development or something versus Tahoe Regional Planning Council, there's some case that would said, you know what, when you're, when you're in the process of settling, you know, you can't, you can't start raising arguments like Dolan and Nolan because everybody's getting something in this negotiated agreement. So that's essentially the reason for development agreements, why, while the city might want it. Because we can ask for things that we might not be able to ask for. We'd like a play area for these children. I know the code doesn't actually require a play area, but we would like that. Or we'd like increased preservation of native vegetation. Yes, our code only requires you to preserve the trees that are yobig or whatever, but we, we would like this. So things that would further the public interest, things that the community might want, we can ask for. We can't ask for illegal things. Oh, we want you to place restrictions that would only allow these kind of people there. Well, except one of the things we could ask for is inclusive zoning, is to say, people with a property with a limit on their income of no more than this, the sixty to one, twenty percent of, we could ask for some things like that, but not illegal things. You know, race and gender and things like that. No Italian people here in this development, you can't ask for that kind of stuff. But we can certainly, we're in a better negotiating position if we can vary a little bit on our side. And so what the developers want is some allowance to vary on their side. Well, the code protects against us going too far because the stat, actually the statute says, in order to approve a statutory development agreement, we've got to make a finding that what we negotiated is consistent with our regulations. Well, it's like, well, wait a minute, if our regulations say you, you, sorry, it has to be ten feet, or let's use an example like, the buffer around a wetland has to be fifty feet. If our regulations say the buffer around a wetland has to be fifty feet and we can't vary that. So what, the real value of a development agreement is you can, you guys, and this is really what you need to think about, you guys could say, well, it's really important that wetlands be protected from adverse impact, but we can go with an average fifty-foot buffer because sometimes you might have to get closer to the wetland here, but you can, you know, say there's a little island, you can maybe get wider in this area. So offering flexibility, but you would say in your code, and this is an example from St. Helen's where I worked a decade ago, that if, it basically said you had to have a fifty-foot buffer around a wetland, but if you entered into a negotiated development agreement, you could have an average fifty-foot buffer. And so we had a guy who came in and said, I'm willing to preserve all these trees over here, which is a hundred feet away, and it's kind of land surrounded by wetland, and, and I'll just leave that alone and I'll, and I'll be able to get a little closer on this side. And so that flexibility was authorized in the code and it was authorized because the comp plan said, in a negotiated development agreement under ORS Chapter Ninety-four, you can vary the, some regulations. And so we don't have to specify everything, but if we want to facilitate development, we, we have two things we want to think about. What do we want in terms of, what does the public want? You know, increased preservation of native vegetation, more storm water treatment, you know, in, in a real example, workforce housing at X percentage of the development. Those are the kind of things we could ask for on the city's behalf in our negotiation. And, and the developer's going to want something on his part. And some of those times it's, it's relief from certain regulations, other things, it may be property. If you looked at the Verde Village thing and the reason why I gave it to you as an example, or gave it to Lindsay to give to you as an example, is that in that project, it combined a land exchange where some park property went to the developer and some property along the riparian corridor along the creek went to the city. And so the city was able to get, swap the property and that was all bundled in with the development agreement. It was also an annexation. The developer wanted to come into the city, he wanted to show something and commit to it. You know, lots of people come before you and they show their pretty plans. Look, I'm planning on doing this. But if they don't contractually commit to do it, they're not doing it. So, go ahead.
If I may interrupt, I think that's a really good, I'm afraid it's to hear my voice. But the city of Gick Harbor also used development agreements in our comprehensive plan amendments because applicants would want to come in with that pretty picture in that project and say, this is what I want to do. But they're asking for a zone or land use designation change that would actually authorize them to do a lot more. And so in that case, development agreements with comprehensive plan amendments would state, we'll change your land use designation from our, you know, single-family residential to multifamily residential. However, you shall not increase and have more than eighty units at any time. You cannot ever make this a commercial use. There, these are the only uses of the implementing zones that are allowed so that it also works as a funnel for the city and to address concerns of the neighbors that may come out in opposition of a proposal or a project. So not only does it open the door, but it can also kind of funnel and help with the approvals of land use and designations that could have more significant impacts. As a professional planner, you're required to analyze the proposal at the highest and greatest use when an application comes in. So if a, for Lincoln City, if a comp plan amendment came in where they wanted to go from their single-family residential to recreation commercials so they could establish a full-time VRD use, recreation commercial also allows taverns, hotels, and a multiple of other uses that when we need to analyze, just because that's what the applicant wants to do, doesn't mean that that is what they will do if they get the approval. So the DA, sorry, the development agreement, which is sometimes called a DA, the DA can help limit those as well.
It's exactly correct, is that we, we, we have lots of people show us their pretty plan, they get approval, and then, well, we don't have this happen to us a lot, but it happens a lot, that they show the plan, they get the property rezoned, and then it becomes a used car lot. And, you know, I hope we analyzed it based upon the worst-case scenario and not based upon what they showed us and, oh, this will be a beautiful garden, yeah, and people will come and visit it, yeah. Yeah, well, that's not what it is at all. So if you want to hold people to what they promise you, development agreement is a authorized, statutorily authorized way to do it. Now, it is a land use decision. And it, there is, there are some cases that say we can enter into development agreements outside of ORS Chapter Ninety-four. But I kind of question why you would do that when the statute expressly authorizes you to do it through the land use process. It's the process we're familiar with, it's the process we want, you know, I, I worry about those other development agreements because they're, don't, they don't feel constrained by the land use system. And, and so if, if you just go off and negotiate with, with a developer, oh, hey, you know, what do you want to do? And they, and you negotiate a development agreement, if you don't bring it down to reality and what the land use system is and what's authorized to be waived and not waived, you're, you're just wasting your time. So we, there's a framework for it, it works. And, and so what we're here to tell you is we would like to bring that forward, kind of, it involves a couple steps. We, we have to authorize it expressly in the comprehensive plan, so there will be a text amendment in the comprehensive plan that says, this is what a development agreement is, this is how it can be used. And there will be provisions in the zoning code where it allows variations or modifications of the existing standards. And then in the zoning code, we'll say, hey, this is what a development agreement is, here are the minimum requirements, that, that'll pretty much track the statute, have some elaboration on the kind of things. And you see that in reality in the development agreement for Verde Village, the Ashland example. It, it may say, oh, you need sections for breach, sections for monitoring. Well, those are all written out in that standard form development agreement, which is, I'm not embarrassed to say, something that's very close to the development agreement I wrote in nineteen ninety in Martin County, Florida. So based on the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act. So it, it's modified, of course, it's been organized, so to speak, so, but it's, it's essentially a, a framework that's used in many states in, in the country.
And so approval for the proposed development agreement would go through the planning commission as well?
Well, there's not a statutory requirement to take it, it doesn't say in the statute that we gave you that it has to go to you. It does say we can adopt procedures about how it will be reviewed. But here's the thing, a development agreement, that's just a development agreement per ORS Chapter Ninety-four, probably doesn't have to come to you for recommendations, because it's not currently in our code that it has to. But if it has anything with it, concurrently processed with it, it certainly will. So the example would be if we say, like zoning, if we create a planned development zone, okay, so there's, we, now we use planned developments as a master plan, but if we create a planned development zone which says, hey, these, you're listing the uses, and we kind of use our planned developments like a planned development zone, we just don't call it a zone. So if you're processing a planned development zone which has a map, a master plan, a preliminary development plan attached to it, it has to come to you because it's a zoning district and a master plan. So it comes to you, it's also a preliminary plat for a subdivision. So all those things come to you. So a development agreement that has those things running concurrently with it would come to you. So Logan Park had a plan and it, not just the annexation, and it came to you for a recommendation and it went on to the council. So you gave a recommendation and went on to council. So I, we haven't talked about whether or not we're going to send them to you. My preference would be to send them to you regardless of whether or not they had anything attached because it's land use, it's a land use and that's your thing, right? You're, you're making land use decisions, you're making findings applying the, the code to specific sets of facts.
And that's something that we can discuss when we draft the, draft the regulations. I think for administrative decisions like a request for phasing or something that does not change land use but is specific to just the project itself, that may not need to come to the planning commission. However, something that offers some, some regational changes, you know, typically, I've nev, in the processes that I have executed for development agreements, it was done in a negotiated fashion with the department that was then presented to city council and they continued the negotiation for it and then, and then made a legislative action on it. However, their planning commission adopted the regulatory standards that allowed the author, authorizing language. Then planning commission in that city said, you're only allowed to change landscaping, you have to meet your stormwater, you have to meet all of your sewer CRCs, you have to pay all of your traffic impact fees unless you build us a new road and, and go beyond what we would require otherwise. And so the planning commi, you, as my commissioners, can consider whether you want to establish parameters that are specific to the locations where development agreements can be used or if you want to establish parameters that, that development agreements specific to future land uses or site design must go through the planning commission. And so that'll be something that you, you would want to recommend is, is do you allow the council under your... the council, under your authorizing language and staff, to regulate it without needing to go through the public, I would say, without needing to go through the Planning Commission process? Or do we require them to be grouped altogether with a complete application?
The ordinance comes to you that sets the parameters. That whether or not the individual agreements come to you is, is, is
Based upon those parameters, you said.
It's tough to negotiate with a developer when you got a bunch of board members that may have different ideas about, you know, just you saw tonight, about, about an application. So it may be that those individual things won't come to you, or maybe they'll come to you in a limited way. But think about this, is that sometimes you have a developer come in and he says, "I would like to buy this property from the city, and, but I won't do it unless I can be guaranteed that I can do this, 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 and this." And you look at the statutory requirements for a development agreement, and it says, "Well, you got to set acreage, or, you know, how big the property is, who's the owner, what's, you have to have a legal or equitable interest, so somebody enters into a contract to buy it from you, that's an equitable interest." They can have an agreement up to 15 years if you're in a city, so they can say, "Well, my plan is to, in four years, I'm going to come in with this project, and I'll go through master plan approval, and then I'll come in and I'll do this." And so they may be planning down the road, and you'll see all those things. You'll see the master plans, you'll see those. But the initial agreement may be, "Here's my idea, and city, I'll buy this property," say it's not from our property, say it's, say it's some other property, or down, go drive down the highway and you see some property on the right there, and you want to buy that property from the owner, and you say, "I'll buy it from you, but only if I can get an agreement from the city that says I can do this down the road, subject to the master plan process, subject to all those things." So it's intended to maybe step back a little bit, not have all the detail, and allow someone to make some commitments to do things. So it's, we wouldn't enter into a development agreement with an equitable owner who was making a contract with somebody if there wasn't something in it for us. Well, why would we enter into this agreement with you to guarantee you these permitted uses, these building heights? Why would we do that? Well, it says right in here, what donations are they going to make to the city? Well, we're going to donate this land, it's going to be set aside for conservation all along the creek. And if you look at the Verde Village thing, you see that kind of thing. Okay, the property is exchanged, this land is donated, they build these improvements.
I think, I, I hear what you're saying, but I also am thinking, at what point, is public input better earlier in the process? So the public has the right to comment on, "We don't like that exchange," or, "We don't, you know, think that's, the city is getting a good benefit from this as well." So I think, to me, the public input earlier in the process would be better than later in the process.
So what I would recommend in the draft development agreement language is that a notice of application is mailed to 1,000 feet of the neighboring property owners, which is a common practice I was used to. I would also like to see sites getting posted within the city for people that drive by to be able to find out information, so that for a development agreement, a notice of application would be required. And then the public hearing process would be the, meet, the goal, goal one of ORS to, and make sure that we have an active and engaged process in that before those agreements are established.
There is a public hearing process, and obviously, and it's a land use decision. Now, but that, does that mean that the Planning Commission engages in the negotiation? No, pretty much when it comes to you, the negotiation has occurred, and you're having a public hearing to say, "Is this good or not? Is this consistent with our code or not? Did the staff go beyond what was authorized in granting modification or waiver of regulations? Or did they not go far enough?" And then, and you make your recommendation to the council. But in terms of, you know, you would like a six-foot-high fence along this property line, you know, that's maybe not where you guys would have the value in terms of the process. But having the public give you an opportunity, an opportunity to weigh in is, the terms of the deal have to be advertised. So not leaving it up to you guys to negotiate the terms, they are, this is what's proposed, and let's comment on what's here.
Many jurisdictions also require neighborhood meetings.
Is that?
Many jurisdictions, in fact, most of the ones that I've worked with in Oregon, and in fact, in Idaho, too, require neighborhood meetings. So the neighborhood meeting has to take place before the applicant submits the application. And that's to, that is to get feedback from the neighbors. There's, there's a certain notification distance that the jurisdiction sets, and the neighborhood meeting notification is also supposed to include any neighborhood associations, and, and then, yeah, and then the, the people within the note, the distance. And Lincoln City doesn't have anything like that, but there's no reason why we could.
One of the things I like about development agreements is there's no appeal from a denial, because it's a legislative act. So, you know, we decide not to pass an ordinance prohibiting chickens, yeah, no, no appeal. I'm just using that as an example. But a development agreement, basically, you can do a lot of work, and if the council doesn't approve it, there's no appeal. Now, if we approve it, it's a land use decision, and it can be subject to an appeal. And it'll go to the Land Use Board of Appeals because that's who reviews land use decisions.
Any, so, we've been talking a lot, I hope you guys' brains aren't fried, and I want to be able to answer any questions you have on this any further, because I recognize that this might be the first time that you've ever been introduced to the idea of a development agreement.
It sounds like a land, like a, 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 deed, oh my God, deed restriction? Kind of a deal, but more negotiable and on any property?
Well, well, no, I think we're, I think we're in agreement that we don't want to make it available on any property. I think that it's more like a contract than it is a deed restriction. But we've kind of negotiated and discussed what it would be, and it is, it operates like a deed restriction in the sense that it limits the use of the property. As Lindsay said, it narrows what could have been a, you know, used car lot is now, no, it's the nice thing that we want. I wasn't going to use VRD as a nice example, but, nice garden.
I don't, I don't, I like the idea, I like the idea that there's a little bit more flexibility, especially for how hard it is for us to find people who want to develop here or who can. I think we need to come up with a way to make some concessions, but, you know, maybe we do have restrictions, like that thing around the wetlands isn't messed with.
What, what developers typically want is an extended timetable of development. They want, they want time, because they got to go talk to their finance guys and start throwing balls in the air. And when they're ready to go, they want to go, so they don't want a lot of process once they've, so they want to be, you know, set up to move quickly when, when things are ready. Because that'll just kill them if they're, if they got to wait to go, go through more hoops. What we want, well, the other thing they want is they want some certainty. So they get essentially commitment from us. We're not going to go change in the regulations on you and say, "Sorry, now you got to be 75 feet away from a wetland." So once they lock in the regulations, they're vested for that period of time. So they want a long timetable, and they want to lock in the regulations that apply, so they get certainty. So they get that even without us, you know, talking about whether or not we can provide flexibility. So they're getting that even if we don't go through the code and say, "Here we can vary, here we don't." So there is value to it, and you can use it for other things, too. I settled a vested rights claim, a dispute with a development agreement when I was in St. Helens. We did the ordinance, or we did the development agreement with the wetland variation thing, and then in Ashland, you get this terribly complicated exchange of property and annexation. And I think annexation is probably where you might see it here, someone come in and say, "I, I want to show you the pretty plan and how I'm going to meet your needs or build your facility that you need, and, and I'll commit to it." So
And to also, for you, Sean, in regards to your question about deed restriction or comment, they do run with the land, so the development agreements can be sold and traded, but it also gives the city the confidence and the, and the understanding of knowing that whoever it goes to, that land will either be developed under that development agreement or it will go back. If, if nothing ever, if a development agreement gets adopted, and it's got a 15-year timeframe, and nothing happens in that 15 years, then it's gone. It has to just meet our adopted standards of, of that zone or, or that land at that point in time, if the development did occur. So they do expire as well if, you know, said developer can't find financing.
Yeah, it becomes a situation where the development is no longer authorized. If you violate the terms of the agreement, nothing's authorized, you can't do anything. You gotta, got to come in and amend it, and, and/or we can go through a process and basically cancel the development.
What I'm hearing is this can open up more development opportunities for our city, and it's kind of what this instrument is used for. Have you, Lindsay, Richard, have you seen that happen in cities that have instituted these as, as a tool? I mean, has it been effective?
Verde Village get built down in Ashland and?
I've got the Harbor Hill Village that hasn't been built yet, but it was a 16-acre, 450,000 square foot shopping center with 14 buildings, and we went through the process. The city actually acquired a half-acre park, additional buffers from the wetland. We acquired seven intersect, we acquired seven intersections where they would put up improved pedestrian crossings with flashing lights. And what we gave was that they could meld the uses, because they had a business commercial zone, and then a neighborhood commercial zone, and then a general commercial zone, and they wanted to put a daycare where the neighborhood commercial zone was, and daycare wasn't allowed under the strict scrutiny of our adopted code. But it allowed some flexibility, as long as the uses were allowed within those two zones for them to determine where to put it. We also acquired additional retention and replanting of trees for the area to provide a dense vegetative buffer. So the public benefit can be there if it is negotiated properly.
Yeah, you want to ask for things, like if you're the city, you want to say, "Okay, we're going to do this land exchange, that's going to happen upfront. And if the rest of your development doesn't happen, I don't care." Because we got our, we got our little thing along the creek, and you got your portion of the, now that's yours, this is ours, and we got that upfront. We don't want to wait to the last phase of your development to get that. So you ask for things upfront.
Typically, the development agreements aren't used for small projects. You're not going to see a ma and pa coming in, paying an attorney an exorbitant amount of money to negotiate with the city for a development agreement. So that's where they're going to be more for your larger projects, your larger redevelopments, or something that might be difficult to develop and need to, you know, like I said, have that, or like Richard said, have that sense of clarity when they start moving forward.
Is this possible, can I ask a question? Is this maybe because of Cascadehead coming up that we're going to maybe divide that out into possible uses?
Well, it depends really on the areas that the Planning Commission will decide in the, in the authorizing use, that is, an area that could be utilized. Like Richard said, I don't think it would be wise to spread it across the whole town, because then what's the point of having regulatory standards if we're, so typically, what, where we applied these kind of flexibilities, where I've seen development agreements implied in previous codes I've worked under, if you were proposing a comprehensive plan amendment, but you wanted to limit the use and not have it be analyzed at the highest and greatest use, you could come in with a development agreement that proposed that. If you, there were neighborhood centers or large areas that wanted, there's a, I did one for a 200-acre, well, I didn't do one, but there was one done in Gick Harbor for 200-acre housing development. They got the total amount that they would get, 1,800 and something units in this acreage, that they would give us 50 acres for the wetland, as well as the storm ponds and the water retention. They would establish parks within the community, they would, for the, for the activities. And so they needed that to be able to go out and build it. They got the agreement for 20 years, the building was done within 10 years because of that clarity of being able to do that. But back to the point of, it really depends on the location. In Gick Harbor, there was two neighborhoods that you could do it. You could either do it in downtown, or you could do it up in what we called Gick Harbor North, which would probably be equivalent to like, it's a lot bigger than what we have up by the Safeway, Rite Aid area, but, you know, just kind of a general shopping center. Gick Harbor North had the Costco, Target, Home Depot, Albertsons, like five Starbucks in there. But that was the area that, that council and that commission designated as, "No, we're only going to allow these kind of flexibility with this area and this area."
I think we're going to want to limit it to, you know, plan, properties that have planned development zoning, or that commit to coming in for planned development zoning. So like a lot of times, you have someone who wants to annex, but they don't want to spend all the money to do the nice drawing, but they're willing to commit to certain key things. We'll do this in terms of workforce housing, we'll do this in terms of dedication of land for parks, we'll do this in terms of, we'll build this improvement. So they may give you a certain key things, and then they'll want to say, "And we'll come in for the planned development zoning within two years," or whatever, "And we'll follow that with a master plan or revised master plan within a year." And then, so they might want to lay it out, because these things take time, and a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a planned development, master plan. So they'll want that certainty before they want to spend all that money. So that may be the way you see it, that they'll be eligible in certain areas, and I think we still have some work to do to try to narrow it. But again, you got, it, within the UGB, you're going to have people want to come in and annex, and they're going to want to commit, show you the plan, that's, and comprehensive plan changes, large properties, and zone changes, you're going to want people that want to try to, "No, no, it won't be a used car deal, or it'll be this." And they're going to want to narrow it, even in the context of rezoning.
And those types typically are allowed citywide, because they're not offering that flexibility from the, the 50-foot buffer average, or some of those other things.
I would think that your builders, et cetera, would like this idea, because it kind of standardizes and lays out things that they have to do, rather than
I've, I've
Potpourri, whenever, whatever comes along.
I've used these since 1990, so.
So if
What is the process with this, and would it?
Yeah, so what we would do is prepare draft ordinance for you guys to review and kind of wordsmith or work through, and then get a notice out and start doing some public noticing for establishing a development agreement standards within the municipal code.
So I, I've been working on just a staff draft development agreement and an amendment, and Lindsay and I and staff have to get together and try to bring it to a point where we feel comfortable giving it to you, and then we'll
I'm not sure that, yeah, I'm not sure this would be able to make it on the June 4th meeting at this time, though, which we do have a few other items, and workload would probably be June 18th at the earliest.
It's on me.
You're the chair.
I don't know what to do, I'm sorry. I kind of got lost there for a second, I was just listening and
That's okay.
I want this to be over.
Is there any training?
Oh yeah, is there any training? Yeah, thanks. Yeah, do we have any Planning Commission training? I could use some. Uh, no, I, seriously, I, I'm not sure, where do we go with this?
Yeah, so I sent an email out yesterday, if you want to move forward on the agenda and just have staff come back with a draft ordinance when it's prepared.
Yes.
Okay. So moving forward, I sent out an email yesterday informing you guys that there is some budget for Planning Commission training, and
Sorry, there's what?
There's some budget for Planning Commission training that can be, there's, I've just like, lost the name of the
Chinook.
The Chinook Institute, and do you know what city it's in?
Coburn.
Coburn. So Chinook Institute is hosting two trainings on
June 14th and 15th.
14th and 15th.
14th and 15th. It's a $250 registration, so I can only grant up to, did I say two? Two, two and Anne Marie will be going. So if anybody is interested, I know that Steve, you attended a Chinook Institute training and could speak to whether it was useful or unuseful.
Very useful and very good speakers. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate going to that.
Though only, Anne Marie is available both days, but it would be a carpooling from city hall to Corburn, to believe is a two-hour drive each way. And the city would pay for your registration for that to attend and then you'd be able to, to carpool for trans, for transportation. So if, if there are two of you that would be interested, it's open. We could do a thumb war if there's three or four of you, but I do strongly recommend attendance if, if you're available that, at that time.
I have no idea.
If you're available.
Is there a deadline for letting you know?
I need to check the registration, but I would, if you can get back to me by Friday of this week, that would, and maybe by like 3:00 PM on Friday, that would give me time to register you by the end of the week.
And what is the date again?
June 14th or 15th.
Or 15th. It's a one-day event. It's not a two-day event, but you would have to
Either or.
Well, but both commissioners would have to pick the same day or one would have to commute on their own.
Is it a series of lectures or is it a specific training?
It is a specific training. Did you guys receive the email I sent yesterday?
I haven't seen that yet.
I mean, no.
I wonder if it got lost in my
Mailbox?
And, or in my outbox.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make sure it gets out to you then. But it is a, a one-day training. Yeah. And specific to planning commissioners, city councilors, staff, anybody that is working with Oregon planning law. So 3:00 PM by Friday. Let me know if you're available and desire to end by 9:00 PM tomorrow. I will make sure that email gets to you.
Any reports or comments?
No reports this evening. Um, yeah, no reports this evening.
Okay. Any future agenda, or future agenda items in the next meeting? It looks like we have a public hearing about an appeal.
We do. We have an appeal of an administrative decision on the, a recent decision for a geotechnical report. So that will be in front of you. In addition to the agenda item of that, on June 4th, you will be getting the draft proposal for the FEMA update regulations. Planner Weston Fritz will be presenting that with a memo outlining some of the opportunities and policy decisions the planning commission will want to consider for our FEMA flood, flood plans. I think I need to go home too.
Well, if that is it, any, anything from staff? No? Meeting adjourned?
Run. Good job.